Okay, I'm gonna call this, um, this council meeting to order. Roll call.
McKnight. Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here.
Uh, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of executive session meetings? Oh, wait, public comment on agenda items, sorry, I'm moving, I'm moving.
That's okay. Uh, yes, tonight we have, uh, Mr. Tom Edmonds. Tom Edmonds.
Do I stand up now?
Yeah, you can.
Thank you.
Is it, is this the presentation that you're gonna get, or is that through Dr. Dixon?
Well, uh, she and I are on the same committee and she asked me to speak.
Okay, you're gonna speak and then there's a presentation, I just didn't.
Not, not, it's not a presentation.
He's writing for the presentation right now.
Okay.
I'm just speaking, I didn't bring a PowerPoint, I would've if I knew I could.
Well, we should, we should've told you to bring, no, I'm kidding, um, I just.
You wanna know what I'm doing?
It's the same thing, and so we have you on as a presentation, so you have time. I was just getting it, my ducks in a row here.
Alright.
I was gonna ask for notice of, uh, executive session meetings and then, is there anybody else on the public comment?
Um, Alan Schaefer is also there, but he would be speaking on the same.
Oh.
He, he's, no?
No, that, right.
Oh, no. He's, he is, um, in support of the.
Like, really, like, economic.
Economic, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just go this way and do the presentation and then we'll do the, the, um, uh, public notice, or public comment. So, sorry about that, go ahead.
That's alright, uh, as you had heard, uh, my name is Tom Edmonds, you don't know me, I moved to Meathville a year and a half ago with my wife. I spent thirty-five years in history museums along the East Coast. Uh, we moved to Meathville, uh, a year and a half ago and because of my background in history, I fell in love with Meathville. It's gorgeous, and as a newcomer here, I often talk to people and they say, "Well, where are you from?" And we're recently from New York State, and they go, "Oh, why Meathville?" And I go, "Why not? It's beautiful here." A lot of you who've long-time residents take it for granted here, but this is one of the most charming towns I've been in. It's small, it's friendly, you have architectural history. And, uh, when I came here a year and a half ago, I, I joined the Unitarian Church and the Unitarian Church, uh, were formed a bicentennial committee. The Unitarian congregation was founded in eighteen twenty-five and they asked me to be on that committee. And, uh, along with, uh, the Episcopal Church and the Methodist congregations were also formed in that year. And with a little research, which I love to do, I found that the John Brown Tannery was built in eighteen twenty-five. There was, the second courthouse was built. This was the number five courthouse that you see at Diamond Park. And, uh, and so I gave myself a job. And I love it, um, I've, uh, the eighteen, Meathville eighteen twenty-five committee, uh, was formed with some Unitarians, Methodists, some Baptists, and Episcopalians, and I asked, uh, Dr. Dixon to join. And we were kinda coasting along, trying to form ideas, what to do, how do we do a bicentennial celebration? Dr. Dix- Dixon joined the committee and it surged, it went like this. So, what you have in hand, I passed out, uh, a grand opening we're having that is, uh, going to be the beginning of a year-long schedule of history events, lectures, site visits. Uh, we're going to do a lot, this, this, uh, what you're looking at, this five-page document is just about, uh, the grand opening on January eleventh, which, uh, Mayor Kinder is speaking at with opening remarks, thank you very much. Uh, but, uh, all of these things happened, and I forgot to mention, uh, the Marquis de Lafayette came to Bentley Hall and spoke. And he said, and he's, uh, he was a master of marketing, he said, "This is the most beautiful valley I've ever seen." Well, he traveled around the United States for a year and a half and probably said that to a hundred and fifty communities, but he said it. Um, so, so what happened in eighteen twenty-five? I, I teach at Gattin University, I teach architectural history and, uh, history of art, so humanities questions are always on my mind, 'cause that's what, I want my students to figure out things. I don't give lectures, I, 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 I plant seeds for students to come up with ideas, so. The question, "What happened in eighteen twenty-five", awarded us, uh, two thousand dollars from the Crawford Heritage Foundation to put on these programs. And, uh, our, our calendar isn't quite finalized yet, Dr. Dixon has been working very hard on it. But there's going to be twenty-four programs on Meathville's history and Crawford County's history, twenty-four programs. That's about two a month. Uh, we're going to have art exhibits by children, uh, MASH or the Meathville area's, uh, high school is going to give us, uh, an exhibit. Um, the Learning Center, uh, which is a parish hall at the Unitarian Church, is going to do an art exhibit. And Hatch Hollow, uh, which has just moved down to another place, they're going to be doing exhibit on Meathville's history. Uh, we're also going to have a sing-along, uh, the parish hall got, uh, eighty thousand dollars from the state of Pennsylvania to restore it to its eighteen seventy-five origins, and so uh, we have a Victorian parlor in eighteen seventy-five and that's been restored to what it looked like. And we're gonna have a sing-along. Uh, we, we're having a lecture on Heidi Cooper by Josh Scheritz, and I was, it's Heidi Cooper, not Cooper, I was corrected by a descendant. That's how the family says the name, I, I'm pushing itself here and I'll probably, uh, I'll probably say it the wrong way, but Josh Scheritz has been, uh, helping us a lot, he's doing a significant amount of work. Uh, he's going to give a tour of the Holland Land Company, uh, which was, uh, Heidi Cooper, uh, Cooper's, uh, uh, business here. Uh, Juneteenth celebration will be held at, uh, at John Brown's Tannery. Uh, I don't know if you guys have seen the film by Michael Keely on, uh, Greendale Cemetery. It's astonishing, uh, Allegheny College is going to be hosting a screening of that. Uh, the three churches, the Unitarian, Episcopal, and, um, Methodists are gonna be hav- having open houses with supper that are open for everybody to tour the the beautiful churches that they have, um, and, you know, to see, see what the congregation is like. John Audubon, uh, the, the great naturalist and who wrote the book Birds of America, came to Meathville in eighteen twenty-four, the year before, but I'm including him, 'cause he's so cool. So, a lecture on Jan Harb, Heidi Cooper, uh, Heidi Cooper women in the nineteenth century were significant influences. Influences, uh, her influencers here in Meathville, in Crawford County. They had a lot of money and they spent it, they were, were great philanthropists, so we have a, a lecture on them, uh, on the Meathville Theological School that was significant, uh, here, it, it trained a lot of pastors that went out west, uh, many different places away from Meathville. Uh, the Public Library is gonna host a children's program on Meathville architecture. The one thing, uh, that I, because of my background and the love, my love of Meathville is its architectural history. It's amazing, we need to preserve it, and how better to do that than to have a children's program on architectural history. Uh, Commissioner Chris Shealy is gonna have an open house at the courthouse. Uh, I think that's in August, uh, Dr. Dixon is gonna be speaking about African-American heritage in Meathville. Um, and the, my, this is my favorite event, is the all-church picnic, and this was, again, steered by Dr. Dixon, who found sixty-one churches in Meathville or Crawford County?
Yes, even more, a little more.
You're, you're finding more?
Yeah.
Sixty-one churches? So, uh, that is gonna be held in August at Roche Park. And you're expecting, what, what'd you say, a hundred thousand people?
So, yes.
So, that's gonna be a big event, and I'm, I just, I'm so proud to be working with her on this, is, 'cause it's, it's my mission and her mission to preserve our history. So, what happened in Meathville eighteen twenty-five? We hope to find out, there is no answer for that, but through these, uh, public programs and, and appreciation for history, I, I hope we can get our community together, we just went through a very fractious political season and, and we need to come together, and, uh, uh, I, we have many people on the committee, there's about twelve people, again, like I mentioned, uh, all the churches, including the Baptist. Um, and begins on January eleventh. This is the program for that day, this is, acknowledges all the people that have been involved in it and all the, uh, organizations that are helping us, uh, which includes, uh, the city of Meathville, Crawford County, and, uh, and, uh, the Public Library, Allegheny College, uh, lots of organizations are cooperating with us on this, so. Uh, thank you, Mayor Kinder, for, uh, doing the opening remarks, and I hope you'll come to our Facebook page, uh, Meathville eighteen twenty-five, that's, we're gonna, I've started it a little bit, we're gonna be hosting, uh, the timeline for the calendar of events that are coming up, so. Any questions?
Are you gonna have shirts that say, "What happened in eighteen twenty-five"?
We are now. It's a good idea.
'Cause now I wanna know, like, if, if we need that to happen, that would happen in twenty twenty-five. Chris, what is, what happened?
You'll have to come to programs and get ideas, and then you'll tell me.
Yeah.
At the, at the end of twenty twenty-five. Okay, thank you.
Mary, if I can just say one thing?
Sure.
Uh, this is my card, I can give it to you, I'm a commissioner on American Two Fifty PA, um, celebrating the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the founding of our nation for Pennsylvania. And, um, if you reach out to me, I will put you in touch with the right people at the state commission, as we're celebrating all the major milestones throughout of Pennsylvania.
I'm new to Pennsylvania, so is this next year?
Uh, twenty twenty-six is the.
Twenty twenty-six, that's the American.
Is the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the founding of our nation, so we're celebrating all of Pennsylvania during that process, and this is something that our commission would like to celebrate, um, in conjunction with you in some manner, so reach out to me, I'll put you in touch with the professionals and we'll let them take it from there.
I thought I was taking on too much with Meathville's history, but you're taking in all of Pennsylvania, that's a lot.
I'm in charge of fundraising, the commonwealth, so if you have an extra million or two laying around, we'd love to talk, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing this, this is, this is gonna be exciting programming. Yeah. I invite you, while things maybe are in draft form, to consider having your picnics, your all-church picnic in the city of Meathville at a park named after the Heidi Co- Cooper family, or we even have a bicentennial park.
Right, it's grand.
That is already called bicentennial park, so we, we might be able to, to host, uh, with our city infrastructure.
Talk, talk to.
An invitation, uh, and we're, I'm really glad that we're a partner and, and support.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is exciting, an exciting year.
And the other thing is, is, uh, what, uh, I think everybody failed to, to tell you is the room that you're in and the people that are in this room love this town in a way that is, um, that, that, you know, may not be unique in Meathville, because we do love this place, but these are people who, who make things happen, uh, especially in this town. So you happen to be in really great company tonight. Uh, uh, and I encourage you to just meet everybody, because everybody here really deeply loves this place.
Spread the word.
Yeah, yeah, in this room.
Thank you.
And out there, but, uh, definitely in this room, it was a good night to come, because you get to be in the room and in the company of, of the people that are in here.
Thank you.
And these are good people. Okay, so now we will move to public comment, um, on agenda items.
Okay, and I'd like to invite Alan Schaefer to speak.
That's good enough for you, need me.
You, I mean, whatever you feel.
I, I don't have a lot to say, um, I, uh, a lot of you know me, but I, um, I've been in Meathville for twelve years, so I'm still an outsider in some books, but I was in the fifth ward for the past nine years. And, uh, we have bar over there, and, uh, it wasn't anything nearly, uh, um, on par with a, a top-flight restaurant with, uh, you know, with, with, with a bar, because that's part of having a restaurant these days, and, uh, and, um, this morning, I missed the last two invitations that we had to go, and most, other people went and did a tour, so I had to do a self-guided tour this morning. Uh, but I wanted to go look at the place down there, and I love what Rob's been doing with it down there. Yeah, it used to look like, uh, you know, a farm that fell into disrepair, though, and, and with a factory next to it that was also in disrepair. And now there's housing down there that we, you know, the city desperately needs, obviously, more of that. And, uh, the buildings, I, it looks like, and I'm no expert on any of it, but it looks like it's been, a lot of it's been refurbished and, and it looks shiny and new, even though it's clearly older architecture, so. Um, I, uh, don't carry any weight or anything, but as a citizen who might be against bars, having lived two doors down from one for a few years over there, I see this as a totally good thing, uh, and so that's all, I just wanna throw my hat and ring to support that. That's all.
Thanks, Mary.
That is all.
Okay. Uh, notice of executive session meetings?
An executive session was held on Tuesday, December tenth, to discuss real estate.
Um, approval of minutes, December third, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes, can I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye, sorry.
That's okay.
I was trying to catch people's eye and say goodbye.
Kinder, Kinder.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, I was thinking maybe I said something wrong.
I changed my mind, I don't wanna approve the minutes anymore. Communication.
None.
Uh, managers report?
Right-to-know requests, we have fifty-nine right-to-know requests, uh, year-to-date, and three thousand dollars in legal fees. General city updates, the city has been awarded the Moore Grant, uh, for the market house, we received notification of that yesterday. So we will finalize that paperwork, sign the grant award, and this is for a, uh, second phase, uh, for a, uh, assessment on the
Energy usage.
Energy efficiency, thank you. Um, and so hopefully out of that, we will also be able to have a plan moving forward on what the energy efficiency needs are, and a plan to make those happen at the market house. Uh, you'll note, speaking of the market house, that there is construction happening in an emergency situation, uh, repairs to the attic structure of the market house, that is expected to take about, uh, three to four weeks to complete fully. Lastly, for the ABC openings, they closed, I believe, last Friday. Was the closing date on the, to submit applications, we've received fifteen applications total. The Housing Authority had two, EAC had one, Market Authority had five, Planning and Zoning had two. Um, zoning hearing board had one, the Mark had two, and, uh, Shade Tree had one. Uh, so we'll begin the scheduling interviews for those, depending on responses, those can take place over the next week or so, and then after the holidays.
Thank you. Um, old business ordinance, third and final reading, twenty twenty-five budget, can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
No changes since last reading of this, um, again, there's no tax increase slated for the twenty twenty-five budget.
Fantastic. Anybody have any questions? Roll call.
An ordinance of the city of Meathville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, adopting and establishing a budget for all funds of the city of Meathville for the year twenty twenty-five, including the general fund, debt and capital funds, liquid fuels program fund, stormwater management program fund, parking fund, real estate management funds, and special revenue funds. Appropriating specific funds established to be required for the specific purposes of the various programs and the funds of the city of Meathville for twenty twenty-five, and establishing authorized maximum personnel compliments for certain departments of the city of Meathville for twenty twenty-five. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. You can ask a question, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't do it before, um, did, did we? Uh, I haven't checked the website, so, so the budget's on, on the website, as, as it has to be. Were we going to add the
The trans.
Interactive stuff, that's for later. That, it's on there? Okay. Um, do we have any way of knowing if people have done anything with it?
No.
Okay. But it's up.
It's up, great.
It's under the finance department, but there is a quick link on the main page of the website.
Okay, awesome, that's great. Thank you. I'm sure.
Thank you. All right, um, old business ordinance, third and final reading, APME pension window, can I have a motion?
So move.
A second. Discussion?
Again, no changes since the last reading. If council recalls, this opens a retirement window, uh, for the APME pension fund for three employees, um, who are eligible based on the criteria. We worked with the actuaries to come up with the criteria, then compassed these three individuals. They have until January thirtieth to submit their intent to retire or not.
Roll call.
An ordinance of the city of Meathville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, to amend Article one sixty-five of the Meathville Municipal Code, City Employees Retirement and Pension Fund, providing for severability, a repealer and an effective date. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Um, resolution, oh, new business, sorry. Resolution, support for Casa Waga Square liquor license for economic development, can I have a motion?
Alright, so move.
Second. Discussion?
Uh, so as Gary described, this is a resolution where councils off, uh, offers their support to the economic development liquor license. This will then, as Gary mentioned, go to the state, uh, for their final approval. This is a requirement from the state in order for them to release that liquor license.
Does anybody have any questions?
No questions. Appreciate, uh, the transparency, the work that you've been able to do with the, the neighborhood. Helps us feel good about the development that's, that's going on. To me, feel good, I can't speak for everybody, just seeing what goes.
Yeah, right, right. Uh, I second that. Any questions? Roll call.
I'm sorry, who motioned on that? Did you motion on that?
Jim.
Oh, Jim, I apologize, I didn't hear you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was lost, just like you.
I'm lost sometimes, so.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meathville, Crawford County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving the request of Dominico LLC for the city to authorize the issuance of an economic development license from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for the purpose of promoting economic development within the city of Meathville. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
I'll move on second reading.
I think it's a resolution, it only needs one?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I was like.
Don't throw me out, Jim.
Yeah. I just wanna make, don't get lost.
Yeah, exactly, I'm shuffle, shuffle. All this well.
Um, all right, ordinance, ordinance, first and second reading, Article three five six administrative code.
Thank you very much.
Second. Can I have a motion? Jim?
Move.
Second.
All right, discussion.
This is an ordinance that, uh, we're suggesting be adopted, um, in nineteen fifty-nine, the city of Meathville adopted, or levied, a five-dollar residence tax, uh, as is permitted, uh, pursuant to the third-class city code. Uh, when the Meathville city code was codified, that particular ordinance was not reflected back into the city code. This is not a new tax, this is nothing new, other than codifying it into the new Article three fifty-six of the Meathville city code, so it's a administrative cleanup.
Okay, so nothing's changing?
Nothing's changing.
Right on. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Just for point of clarification, we charge a ten-dollar tax. Five dollars of it is this tax, and the other five dollars is a separate provision.
Right, that's the occupational privilege tax, um, it's my understanding that the s-
Not occupational privilege, I don't think.
The
Per capita.
Per capita tax, correct, the per capita tax, the, um, uh, it's my understanding that the school district is gonna be charging a uh, per capita tax this year as well.
Right.
Um, so when you see, uh, the way that the law works is if both the city and the school district each adopt a five-dollar, uh, per capita tax, um, the, the total max that can be allocated is ten. So when, when both entities pass that, half go to the city, half go to the school district. So when you see your per capita tax bills this year, what you're gonna see, um, is an additional five-dollar tax on there. That's an additional school district tax, there's no tax increase on that from the city's perspective.
Right.
It's the same tax, the same regime that the city has always charged. The extra five dollars will be a school district tax. Um, and I believe it's yet to be seen how it's gonna be reflected on the tax bill, but that's an important part to understand.
Thank you.
So, oh, sorry, it's currently, uh, I know this, 'cause I just paid my, my, the only one for per capita tax the other day. Uh, so rate the city, it's ten dollars, county, it's five.
Five.
And school district to date is, has been zero, so I, I, I hear what you're saying about we're not sure how it's gonna show up?
Well, the reason I say that is because when it's, when it says city per capita tax, ten dollars on there, that's a misnomer, it's a five-dollar residence tax and a five-dollar per capita tax. So what you may see is a per capita tax, ten dollars, city tax, city residence tax, five dollars. But of that per capita tax, five would go to the city and five is a new tax that goes to the school district.
Okay.
And you'd also see the county per capita tax.
And you also see the county per capita.
So you might have four lines, county per capita, school per capita, city per capita, or, uh.
Per capita general.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm trying, sorry, Jim, uh, uh, I'm trying to understand, uh, are, are we losing half of, of what we're collecting? No. No, we're not, we're fitting half to the school district.
Nope, nothing's changing on our end.
Okay. So the only addition is the, is the school district, so.
Mm-hmm.
And that's there, that is their right and their, their.
Right.
Um, do we have a administration, do we administer that, do we collect it?
We will, yeah.
Yep.
All right, roll call.
An ordinance of the city of Meathville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, creating Article three fifty-six of the city of Meathville Administrative Code, entitled Residence Tax Providing For An Effective Date Severability And Repealer. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Can I have a motion for the second reading?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Uh, resolution authorized modification, twenty twenty-one, CDBG application, can I have a motion?
Awesome.
I'll second. Discussion?
I was like, you have it, Jim.
Uh, I, as I informed council at the last meeting, this is likely to come before you, that this was likely to come before you at this meeting. Um, this is another modification of the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two CDBG allocations. Um, in August of twenty twenty-four, council initially modified the original twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two applications to allocate additional funding from Heidi Cooper Park, Fairby Fairmont, to the purchase of a fire truck. Because of some miscommunication and DCD red tape, uh, that wasn't going to be able to happen. So instead, we allocated purchase of a fire truck funds from capital. Uh, and then this modification in front of you tonight is to modify the CDBG application to move the money originally allocated in capital for the replacement of the fire department roof to use CDBG funds for the replacement of the fire department roof, so swapping money, essentially.
Where's gonna pay for the fire truck, out of pocket, D instead of pocket A, and the roof, out of pocket, A instead of pocket B.
Correct.
Does it cost us anything to modify for CDBG?
In advertising.
No.
Uh, but that advertising cost comes out of CDBG administration funds, so.
It eats away, we're just gonna eat away at our money.
Roll call.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meathville authorizing a modification of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Application. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Uh, resolution authorized modification, tw- uh, twenty twenty-two CB, uh, CDBG application, can I have a motion?
Go for it, Autumn.
Aye, move.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, same principle that applies to twenty twenty-two CDBG.
I just, I'm wondering if maybe it comes with the comprehensive planning process, it also, like, I think, um, uh, it's clear that, like, staff is, like, taking a longer view with capital investments and stuff, and, you know, I know we gotta do a three-year community development plan for these, and just wondering if we can do a plan that sticks. Or some, I just, I mean, it, it's hard to keep track of, uh, all of the different ways we've said we'd use this money. And I understand the various, like, factors, and so.
It is, right, I mean, this money is. I mean, this money is... Part of the compounding factors, just a reminder for everyone, is that this money needs to be used by April of 2025. It's excess money from various projects. Heidi Cooper specifically was a large sum of that. And we've gone through three different grant administrators at DCD who have various opinions on things, and how things are able to be spent and the requirements. So, yes, I wholeheartedly think we can come up with a plan that sticks. There are some circumstances that we just don't think of.
Yeah. So, it's less about, maybe it's less so much a moving target for us as it is the changes at DCD and projects coming in under budget, which is a good thing. And that we have more money to work with. Okay.
And also, right, like, thank you for, right, like, really, yeah, and, and looking at the bigger picture and figuring out ways to use this money, right? We certainly don't want to send any back.
No.
We want to use it all. We want to use it all. So, all right, any other questions? Roll call.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meaville, authorizing a modification of the fiscal year 2022 Community Development Block Grant Application. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Resolution, levying taxes for 2025. Can I have a motion? Jim?
So move.
I'll second.
Mayors here. Aye, discussion.
Taking it.
So, this is a resolution form of the ordinances that council is used to seeing. As a reminder, you have to levy taxes regardless of whether you raise taxes, lower them, or keep them the same. Because no taxes were raised this year. You can authorize the levying of the taxes via resolution. The only difference from previous years in levying of taxes is that we moved .15 mils from shade tree to capital improvements.
What's the thinking behind that?
So, the rationale behind that is we have not, to my recollection or research, allocated tax monies to capital improvements. There is indeed a need for capital improvements as we've seen evidence from Market House, roof of the fire department, the public works garage. Historically, we've done capital borrowing every three years to fund those capital projects. That is just not a sustainable practice. So, in an effort to take a broader look, a longer-term look at how we budget, how we handle debt and incurred debt, the decision was that the best use of this extra .5 mils, .15 mils, is to move it to capital improvements to start somewhere of having a separate pot of money that we can draw from, not only for longer-term projects, but also for emergency capital improvements that might not fit into a bond issue. We would like to reserve bond issuances for large projects, like rehab of the parking garage, or building a new public works garage, those types of things, not for the purchase of vehicles, of police cruisers, things like that. We've asked department heads also to allocate funding in their budget moving forward each year to those smaller capital purchases, like cruisers and things like that.
Can the proceeds of this levy be stored, if you will, in pligot? For better yield?
Yes.
Can you, what does that mean?
Pennsylvania?
Local.
Local government?
Investment trust.
Investment trust.
It's a high yield.
It's a higher yield. In other words, if the bank case you was quarter of a percent, they might pay three and a half percent.
Because we might not see those capital expenses this year, but we could put them at a high yield. Okay, okay.
Right.
And, and you described the extra mil, you described them as extra mils, and they're extra because the shade tree is capped.
The shade tree per third class city code is capped at .1 mils of taxes. So, previously, we had allocated .25 mils. That's not kosher with our class city code. We had to move that money. And the decision was to move that extra .15 mils to capital improvements.
Right. It is a smart monetary decision, but I just want to make clear we're not choosing to divest from trees. We just are following loss, okay, and making smart monetary choices.
The refuse rates, will they kick in now, or will there be a delay?
No, there will be a delay in that, once we negotiate the contract, find what the new rates will be. Probably July, April. The current refuse contract expires at the end of June of 2025.
I just did want to point out some of the words being used, extra. Number one. Planning, right? Planning in decades. Having the, the ability for each department, right, to put money aside, to plan for the things, right? So, I just, I just wanted to point out the shift, right, from borrowing to saving and from reactionary, right, governing and planning, to, to, you know, planning in decades and, and having, you know, having that, the ability to do so. So, just again, thank you, right? It's good work, and it's, it's nice to know that Meaville now is in, in that situation opposed to reactionary, right, like, and, and in, in a, in a place that is so difficult, right? That we can plan for new cars and we can plan for, right, you know, putting our money into places that is so needed. So, I appreciate all the work being done. Does anybody have any other questions? Roll call.
A resolution for the city of Meaville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, levying the following taxes and fixing the rates of taxation for the city of Meaville for the year 2025, being a tax for general revenue purposes, a tax to pay interest and principal on any indebtedness incurred pursuant to the Local Government Unit Debt Act, a tax for capital improvement, a tax for recreation and parks, and a tax for shade trees, all of which taxes are levied pursuant to the applicable authority in establishing the penalty charge for late payment of such taxes. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Resolution, authorized signatures, release agreement, Parkside Commons. Motion to authorize?
I would say move.
Second. Discussion?
2006, the city of Meaville entered into a mortgage with the operator of Parkside Commons in the value of $200,000 for various fees that were owed to the municipality as a result of some development issues that it had at that time. The property is going up for sale. It is a distressed asset. If the property, if the bank was to foreclose on the property, we would lose our ability to hold them to some affordable housing rates. We wanted to make sure that we, that it's preserved. And so, we negotiated a $100,000 lump sum payment to the city that would occur at closing, which has been extended, I believe, to January 10th. So, if you were to release the mortgage, we would receive that $100,000 check at closing. And, and that would be in full satisfaction of the mortgage that is owned and the property would be transferred to an entity that is better capitalized and better able to make more investments into that particular property. So, we, we think, in our estimation, that if the property were to go and be foreclosed, we would receive a similar, if not less, amount than what has been negotiated. We think this is in the best interest of the city.
And if we're going to foreclosure, the affordable housing provision might be lost?
The affordable housing provision would be lost.
And that specifically is 13 years that, that the, that the units have to remain affordable. That would, we'd be losing if we didn't have the flexibility on this mortgage.
And of course, this money will go into our capital reserve fund.
April?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
I love the slow, cool way you said that.
Of the core.
I didn't know the question.
Yeah, right, yes. I appreciate it. You know, in the bigger picture, right, we are preserving homes and people to be able to live in those homes. We are keeping people first. And that's always a beautiful thing. Does anybody have any other questions?
I wonder, the sale has to go through, obviously, but I wonder if, once it does, if we could maybe invite the new buyer to attend a council meeting? I think we've, like, referred some tenants over there and, you know, want to be a good partner. Be nice to know. This family-run business apparently.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
You said January 10th is the time?
The last possible date for closing.
All right, roll call.
A resolution of the city of Meaville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the release of the mortgage held on that property, commonly known as Parkside Commons condominium. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Public comment on non-agenda items?
We have none.
Councilmember statement? Jim?
Thank you. I have a lot of them. First, thank you to the fire department, the auxiliary police, all the volunteer fire departments who showed up, everyone who helped in any way, including rescuing and taking care of the animals that were in the fire on Baldwin Street. And for the speedy way in which Marianne was able to get a permit to have the place demolished the same night that it burned. Apparently, no human lives were lost, and I hope no animal lives were lost. But it was a, a great joint effort by the entire community and all of our people in public, in public service. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Jim. Gretchen?
Thank you, Jenna. Thank you for the whole, I know it was me and everybody who played that part in that fire and reaching out to the social organizations. I think that the one family already has a home and the other one has to GoFundMe, so I was just really impressed. Thank you, Marianne, for reaching out and telling them. That's a work, to get that to go. Thank you so much for everyone who showed up around this project, the Casa Wago Square project, taking the time. I'm so glad you're here. Just thank you so much. I just want to take a moment to thank everyone in the room, Jim and Jamie and Autumn. Marianne, I almost shout. Yeah, I don't know, it's the holidays. Good. Gosh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm too emotional. I can't even, okay, I'll just relax. But thank you just so much. It's really been a great year, and thank you for coming. Gosh, Darla, there. Gosh, I can't stand how my mouth doesn't connect. I get emotional. But just thanking for a really great year. I was able to do the walking tour with Peter, and it was pretty cool to just walk those 14 miles of streets in Meaville. I mean, there's a lot more miles, but it's, like Jamie says, it's really a wonderful community. And I'm just glad that we're all here and we're all doing what we do, and we're here for each other. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Gretchen. Yeah, no, I reiterate the thanks to the folks who came tonight and expressed themselves and the opinions of the neighbors. I think it really does mean a lot for us to hear from, from people, so thank you for that. And thanks for investing in Meaville. That's what we need. We're all putting in what we can and are, are part of this thing. And to that end, I'm grateful to Dr. Dixon and Mr. Edmond. But the effort around Meaville 1825, especially the approach of, you know, just bringing people together in, in this time to kind of focus on a shared history and running things together, I think, is, it's beautiful. I hope we can embrace it and support them and appreciate the fact that they came to share tonight. Yeah, I am grateful also to staff. It has been a good year and grateful for the work that you do every day, and you show up really hard to do it. So, thank you for your service to the city. Thank you for being public servants, and I hope that you're proud of your work. I'm proud. I think we're proud of you and what we're able to do together. Relatedly, yeah, I mean, I, I also, so Friday's fire was, was, was a scary time. It was like a very intense afternoon. And I do think that we saw the resources of our city, the infrastructure of our city, showing up to do what it's supposed to do. It's, I think it's circumstance that we, none of us are ever in. But it was nice to, I was in my neighborhood, and I bore witness to the fact that, okay, if this does ever happen, like, we have the resources here to make sure that people are safe and, and taken care of. Our fire department and all of the fire departments that showed up, even folks that were off-duty, people with children with them, like, retired people came and provided pizza, right, that had pizza for the crews that were there late in the night. Our police and our auxiliary police were keeping people safe and, and ensuring that people had a safe and warm place to go. It was such a goal day, so the fact that people could get into neighbor's homes, to CHAPS, I think was, was really, really helpful. And so, I was so glad to see that folks were taken care of. Yeah, to city administration, Marianne, for taking action and being able to move quickly. Our public works trucks were there dealing with the, the salt and the ice on the road and the hazard that that created. I got an email the next day from CHAPS, like, collecting, you know, items for, for the folks affected. And so, it was, again, it was, yeah, I think it was a really, yeah, I think it was, it was, it was, it was a really intense thing to, to see, and I can only imagine what it was like for, for the folks living there and, and living actually next door. But from my experience, it made me really grateful that we've got the, we've got the, the infrastructure here and the ability to keep people safe, keep it from spreading, to do all that stuff. So, yeah, just lots of gratitude to our staff that do this work every single day. It also made me look around and was like, holy cat, like, people are so cool under pressure, and this is just their jobs. It's like, I can't even imagine. So, yeah, so much, so much credit to staff who just take care of people every day as part of their jobs. And Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and Happy New Year. And I look forward to 2025 and what we, what more we can do then.
It's awesome, yes. Yeah. I say it all the time that we live in a town that cares about each other, right? It's not just land, it's the people here. We do love each other. And seeing an incident like that, right, lets us know that the people that were there taking care of us, right, they didn't, they weren't just doing their jobs. They cared about the people there. And that was the most beautiful part, right? Everybody there cared. There were the police and the fire and our ambulance service, and they were talking to each other and caring about each other, and neighbors. We are a community of, of almost 13,000 people who care about each other. And I don't think I've seen it so clearly as I did that day. And unfortunately, right, people are noticing that, how, how well we took care of that, right? And when I say we, I didn't do anything. I got to have some baby time at that, at that, right, like, in my house. But, right, when I say we, I mean as a community, right? There are people in this room that take care of things every single day to make people's lives easier, right? And I'm grateful to be here, and I'm grateful that we get to be in this life together, in this relationship together at this particular time. And it's Christmas, and, right, we get to spend that together. And don't forget, people lost their homes, so there is a GoFundMe out there. And we, we get to give to them also at, at this time. So, with that, I just, I'm just very grateful. I love this town and the people I get to serve with, so I know that's such a feeling, but I do. And it's just who I am, and I just appreciate everybody. a feeling, but I do, and it's just who I am, and I just appreciate everybody, uh, for coming out, and everybody who lives here with me, and with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
I will make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All right. Very dramatic.
Discussion. Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.